This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, June the 18th, 2019, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schluessner?
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge as we're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Point 01, approval of agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz?
There's one change to the agenda. Item 7.08, addendum to the superintendent's employment contract, has been added.
With approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 3.01, recognitions. Mr. Munoz?
At this time, I'm going to call Ms. Sarah Hayes, Executive Director of Children's Dental Health Services, to the podium.
Like I said, my name is Sarah Hayes. I am the Executive Director of Children's Dental Health Services, which is a mouthful. So from here on out, I'll refer to us as CDHS. Thank you so much for giving me a moment of your time. CDHS is a nonprofit dental program that has been providing services in the Rochester schools since 2013. Also, we were founded in 2005, so we've been doing this for a while. Gradual expansion. This year, we have started in Century High School, last year to Mayo and, I'm sorry, Mayo and John Marshall. So we're very proud of that, that we're in all of the schools. So why do we have school-based clinics? Oral health is essential to overall health. I was at a conference last week, and it was said, "The brain is three inches from the mouth." So if you think about that, like, your brain is three inches from your mouth. So I don't think there is a more important aspect to, you know, a child's education than their health, and oral health is part of that. Additionally, there are roughly nine million school days missed annually in the United States due to dental-related illness, not routine visits. Students qualify for our program. They are all in the free or reduced lunch program. They do not have regular access to a dentist, because dentists are very limited here in our community, for those children that are on a medical assistance program and have no insurance. Those are the children that we do see in the schools. School staff are identified by, or children are identified by, school staff. Middle and high school students, we send flyers home to spread the word about the program. In elementary schools, we send flyers home and information to all children, trying to reduce the stigma, as well as give everyone an opportunity to participate for those students who may not be, have been identified as of yet. So how do we do it? So every day, we drive our beautiful Chevy Express van. We have affectionately named Blanca, because she's white, always shining clean. So we drive up to the schools and borrow a flatbed, and 30 minutes later, we have a full-functioning dental clinic in the school. In schools, we're providing dental cleanings, fluoride varnish, sealants, oral hygiene education, and instructions, x-rays, dental exams, nutrition counseling. And then for those students that do find, have treatment needs, we do restorative services in our office at the United Way Building. Just to show you a little of what we see, this was a student in the Rochester Public Schools this year, and my hygienist referred to this as "fun calc," which means, "This is not even the worst we see." And that's pretty bad. So additionally, just, oop, sorry. Few pictures from just some of our clinics. We have a wide range of children that participate. We set up in all different locations, media centers, art rooms, any extra space the schools can spare, and we greatly appreciate it being offered to us. So the schools that are participating are all listed here. I won't list them all to you. We are reaching all of the Rochester sites, and we're very proud of that, and hope to continue to do so. So what did we do this year? We saw 690 children, unduplicated. Of that, 512 were elementary students, 82 were middle school, and 92 are high school. Our middle school number is a little lower than I would like to see. Middle schoolers are a challenge, so we'll just keep at it. Of the children we serve, these are the demographics that we are serving, roughly almost even split of female and male. But I'd like to point out the insurance status of the children we serve. 280 of the children we served were uninsured. So that means that we are down, that was 40% roughly of children with no insurance. So that's a lot. We provided 943 dental cleanings, fluoride varnish, oral hygiene, instructions, and nutritional counseling to those 690 children. So that means we were able to provide about 73% of them with two cleanings this year, which is a huge step up from the zero cleanings that they would have been on waitlists to receive from dental providers in the community. We also provided 251 students with x-rays. Those x-rays were reviewed by our dentists via teledentistry, and then if they had needs are, have been called for treatment in our office. Of the children that had referrals for treatment, of the 388 and 96, so far 50 have had their treatment completed. Many others are still in treatment. Many others have not initiated treatment. So our sealant program, we are so much more than a sealant program, but you hear a lot of talk about sealant programs in school, and the wonderful things that sealants can do, and that they prevent, sealants, or they prevent cavities on almost, sorry, I lost my spot. I don't, I'm not a clinician. Can you tell? So they prevent cavities on over 40, 30%, 40% of the tooth. It helps stop a cavity. So 821 molars were sealed, and that's a good amount. So we are really excited this year. Our program has grown to now we are in all of the sites, but, and we do provide education to all of the children that we see, but we would like to be able to provide education for the children that don't qualify for our services, but still need to know how to care for their mouth. So just because they don't qualify for our services doesn't mean that we don't want to touch them. So we are offering classroom education to all of our schools this year as a separate kind of program, I'm sorry, 30 minutes about. Everything can be tailored to what the classroom needs or wants, hands-on demonstrations of brushing. We have a really fun magnet board that kind of shows what you eat and should eat and shouldn't eat, fun interactive items for the children to use as learning tools. But that is really what we do. So we're going to bring in more education to our programs this year. We're very excited about that, and we hope that our 690 number will grow because of that we know that there are more children in our community that need services. There are 15,000 children in Olmsted County on medical assistance, and we serve 690 in the largest city in Olmsted County. So there's more there, and we're going to keep working at it. But we're very proud to be part of the schools. I'm a parent of a Rochester Public School child. I moved here specifically for this school district. So I'm so proud to be standing in front of you, and with the, thank you for your continued partnership. We pride ourselves on happy, healthy smiles, and we look forward to continuing that in the coming year. And yeah, if anyone has any questions, hopefully answer.
I just have a comment. Thank you so much for this education about the services that you provide, and I think this is such a great example of the way that the community comes to where our kids are, and we really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you very much. We are grateful for the space and the time, and happy to help. This is what we love to do, so thank you very much.
And if there were community members and/or organizations who wanted to come alongside CDHS to undergird support, how would they go about doing that?
They can contact me. Anyone can call me. So our website is www.20teeth.org, and we are on Facebook, Children's Dental Health Services, and welcome to give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, this is the time of the year where we recognize our student athletes that make it to state in the spring sports. Tonight, we're able to have students from Century and our Rochester Raiders, so this time I'm going to have Mr. Queesley start things off.
Good evening, Chair Barlow, members of the board, Ms. Edgar and Mr. Munoz. Again, it's a delight to be here in front of you this evening to start talking about our state place finishers. And tonight, we're going to start off with Coach Vic and the boys' track team, and also Coach Stanek is going to join us up here. So guys, if you'd come up and face the board here, the board members at this time, we'll introduce you.
I'm going to let these gentlemen introduce themselves to you as they go through, so they get a chance to speak publicly in front of everybody. Sam?
My name is Sam.
Sam?
Ahoushan.
I'm Kyle Philpott.
Colin Smith.
I'm Zane Huber.
I'm Coach Vic. I'm the head track coach, and this is Coach Stanek, our sprints coach. And I'm going to have Coach Stanek say just a couple of words about these guys, because he worked with them the closest, and has truly built our sprint program into something truly special. So Coach?
I appreciate that.
Coach, would you mind going to the mic over there?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll keep it brief. I know I could talk a really long time about not only these five young men here, but about our entire program and the future of it. But for these guys, a lot of accomplishments started really early for them in the winter. They started holding their own captain's practice and putting themselves through workouts to prepare themselves for a unique opportunity that presented themselves at the state tournament to compete for a state championship. Throughout the year, they were the first Century team, sprint team, to go to the Hamlin Elite Meet. They set five school records, three-peated as Big Nine Conference Champions, five All-State Athletes, school records in the 100, 200, 4x1, 4x2, and 4x4. Went to state. Sam represented our school in the open 200, and then collectively, these five guys represented in the 4x1, 4x2, and the 4x4. The 4x4 set a school record that day, well, on Friday in prelims, running 322.7, excuse me, 322.17. And then our 4x1 ran a 41.79, which is not only a school record, but the fifth fastest time in the history of the state. So it's been a, it's been a really, really fun, exciting year, and I'm really glad that their hard work and their determination, not only they forged this brotherhood together, but they're going to have some memories to take with them for the rest of their lives.
Congratulations.
If we could at this time have their parents please stand and be recognized. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Next up, boys tennis, Coach Warren and Varun, if you would please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Warren Lorenz. I'm the head coach for Rochester Century's Boys Tennis Team. This is Varun Iyer. He placed second at the state tournament this year. I just wanted to give you a quick recap of that experience. In the state tournament, it's a two-day event for individuals, and Varun was able to beat multiple opponents to get to the finals, and then eventually losing to the state champion. And overall, I just wanted to thank you, each and every one of you, for your support, as well as Mr. Queesley, for his support as well. So thank you very much.
Did you do doubles last year?
Doubles last year and sophomore year.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Mark, do you have his parents here? Yes, if mom and dad would please stand with us here? Okay. I couldn't remember Varun if they were going to be able to make it or not. So Varun's had quite a success story for us in our tennis program, both in the team and in the individual, and he's going to be deeply missed, not only as a participant, but as a leader in our program. Next, we have Coach Tom Brown, and I think Coach Brown was not able to make it tonight, so we're going to turn over the reins to Connor Reed and Kayla Edwards, and they're going to come up and introduce the Rochester Raider softball team. If those guys would please come forward. And the voice is going to introduce them, or are you going to introduce them?
All right.
Okay.
So we'll have Kirk, if you want to start. Name, grade, school.
Century, Kirk Peterson, and I'm going into 11th grade.
Being really, and I'm going to be, I was in 11th grade last year, and I'm going to be going into 12th grade next year.
My name is Joe Hansen. I will be a freshman, and I will go to John Marshall.
Calvin, you're going to be a freshman, right? At?
John Marshall.
John Marshall, right? Yep.
Blake Kelman will be a junior at Century.
Noah Johnson, senior when I graduated.
Stuart Harrison, sophomore at Century.
Tyler Rosted, I am officially going to be a junior at the end of this year.
So I just, these are a few of our members of our team. We're very excited. We're returning half of our starting lineup, so excited for next year. This year, we ended the season with a 3-3 regular season record going into the state tournament. If you go on the Minnesota State High School League and read their write-up, we had the upset of the tournament over Robbinsdale. Robbinsdale, when I first came in, started coaching, had won six state tournaments in a row, so we beat them 13-3, so it was a, they were a number-one seed. We were in the North Conference, we were the number-two seed in the South Conference, so that was the upset of the tournament. Ultimately, we did lose to Dakota United in a 8-7 loss. They scored bottom of the seventh one round. It was tied 7-7 going into the bottom of the seventh, so it was a very close game. Our players did very well. Again, with a 3-3 record, you know, going into the state tournament, we didn't know where it was going to go, but they really showed up and put a lot of heart into it, and very proud of how these athletes performed that weekend. So thank you. And if the parents would stand up, please.
That weekend, I was kind of busy at home doing some things and wasn't sure if I could get to the state championship day, and all of a sudden, I got a text from a member of the high school league staff and says, "The Yankees just got beat. You gotta get here." And I'm thinking, "When's the next game? Hour and a half. I got an hour and a half drive." And I walked in just as they were starting to play, so it was an intense game. They represent Rochester Public Schools, just awesome. I know Mr. Munoz knows when game day is, just like I do. They come find me in the hallway or at lunchtime, and it's game day. And they remind me who we're playing, what time the bus leaves and everything. So they keep me very informed as the school year goes on. But again, a hidden secret in our Rochester Public Schools activities program, our adapted programs, is pretty special to all of us that are interacting with it. So on behalf of Century High School and the spring coaches, thanks again for all of your support you give our student athletes and our coaching staff, because they do an enormous amount of work on behalf of our students. So thanks, and have a great evening. I'll have Julie Brock, Executive Director of Cradle to Career, to give us an update.
Good evening, happy summer. Thank you so much for having me. I am brief tonight because Cradle to Career is in, we're growing legs right now, and that's just a little slower work. But I wanted to give you an update on our two collaborative action networks that we have open. Kindergarten readiness in the month of May was able to refine their results, their population results, so what they are aiming for, and also the indicator of what we will be measuring for that. So the results are all children are ready for success in kindergarten, and their indicators are the percentage of youth who are meeting the widely-held expectations in social-emotional literacy, math, cognitive, and physical, and language. Those are the domains in which, that are within the widely-held expectations that they will be measuring. So they have already started to figure out what their action steps are, and their next meeting, which is tomorrow, they will be actually dividing into three different subcommittees and starting to claim their work. So it's pretty exciting. We're hopeful that we'll have some data, then some localized data for you in the coming months. So our other collaborative action network that is open, High School, their result has been refined to all kids graduate from high school and are prepared for their next step. Indicators, they have identified that they want to measure the four, five, six, and seven-year graduation rate, and then they are also still figuring out how are we going to measure preparation for our next step. So again, they have a little bit more work to do, and you can imagine that there's a little bit more complexity there, so, and also, when we think about data and how data is available to us, we're not quite sure how we're going to measure that yet, but that's what they're working on. So their next meeting, they're going to keep pounding away at that, and their next meeting is at, oh, July 27th, from 3:00 to 4:30 at the Rochester Area Foundation. We are also working with some Zoom technology, so that we can hopefully record and also offer a technological opportunity, especially for educators who may or may not be able to get there during their off-seasons or even during the school year, because they may or may not have a prep that aligns. So we're working on trying to make sure that we are accessible. The last thing that I will tell you is that we offered a training on the Minnesota State Data Systems, so the Early Childhood Longitudinal Data Set, which they don't like shortened to ECLDS, so it's this ECLDS, and the SLEDs, to our partners. We had 20 partners that came and were trained in that. We also have a lot of great resources, so if you're interested or curious about what that training held, please give me an email, and we will send you out with their presentation, and then also the links that go with that. So those are the big updates that we have right now. Oh, there is this one other little one. We, with the leadership of Carla Nelson, we were also able to procure some funding at the legislation level, so going forward, we are funded $250,000 for the next two years. So yes, we're very, very excited, because that gives us the infrastructure that we hopefully, you know, we can build a really strong foundation from that point. So a tiny little, tiny. And I will offer, I mean, I will answer any questions that you may have for me. If not, then I will move on, so we can get going.
Any questions?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
3.03, 2018, 2019 School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Board members? Director Workman?
I attended the Rochester Public School Foundation meeting last week, and the grants, the requests that teachers made for grants money have all been reviewed and scored, and those will be announced sometime in the next few weeks.
And I've had the opportunity to attend two community events at their request. One was, or is, the Community Day of Prayer, which was quite interesting for me. What they do is invite elected officials and people of interest to come and speak, share what they do, and how the faith community can perhaps come alongside and be of more support. And a school board chair, I was invited to attend and participate. As you would imagine, even then, there were a number of questions being raised regarding the referendum, and was more than happy to provide that information. Additionally, last week, I had the opportunity to attend a grassroots organization, Freedom, and help me out, Jean, you may recall, you spoke with them, Brian Rodden, the group that meets at Twigs. Put you on the spot, but...
Yes.
But very, very good organization. Again, grassroots organizations that are concerned about the community, represent a wide spectrum of the community business, retired professionals and citizens just wanting to know what is going on in our public schools, and how they can be of value to. There was something that was raised that I was unsure of, that I said I would follow up with, and rather than blurt it out, I'll speak with the superintendent later about that. But I just found it very interesting, the opportunities that are out there, and the communities that are willing to reach out and look for someone to come and speak with them and share with them a narrative that is contrary to what they may be hearing, posted on social media or reading about in other mediums. So I encourage my fellow board members to not shy away from the opportunity, but to fully embrace it.
Well, and I think Director Barlow, too, that as you discovered, that regardless of political affiliation or religious affiliation or a lack of, we have a lot of people in the community who are really concerned with our kids, and want information and really want to help. So I think it's sort of life-affirming.
Exactly. Any other board member updates? Okay, moving forward, the consent agenda, this is an action item. Does anyone want an item removed for separate consideration?
With approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Munoz?
Yes, we have three retirements we'd like to recognize. The first one is Gina Dischini. She's a special education para at Mayo High School. Retirement effective at the end of the day, August 30th, 2019, and she's been with the district 22 years. Next one is Marilyn Temple, special education para professional at Willow Creek Middle School. Retirement at the end of the day, August 31st, and 21 years with the district. And the last one is Roberta Strash, special education para at Kellogg Middle School. Retirement effective at the end of the day, August 30th, 2019, and 23 years to the district. So we want to congratulate these three individuals on their retirement and thank them for their service to the district.
7.01, approval of the 2019, 2020 school district budget. Bid resolved that the school board of Independent School District 535. Technology can't live with it or without it. Technology can't live with it or without it. Couldn't stand watching me do that anymore. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve and appropriate the 2019-2020 original expenditure budget in the following amounts. General Fund, $232,443,396. Food Service Fund, $9,268,533. Community Service Fund, $13,409,769. Debt Service Fund, $11,216,509. Workers' Compensation Fund, $1,135,982. Dental Insurance Trust Fund, $2,700,440. Health Insurance Trust Fund, $33,001,501. Internal Service Fund, Paper Tiger, $408,982. OPEB Irrevocable Trust Fund, $1,352,767. And the HRA Trust Fund, $2,381,000.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7.02, renewal of contracted services for the Independent School District 535 Self-Inurance Trust Fund Program. This is informational. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information.
Good evening, Chair Barlow, Superintendent Munoz, board members. We're here to just give an information update on the Self-Inurance Trust Fund. This is for the health and dental insurance of our employees. This fund was started in 1982, and it is, sole purpose is to make sure it has enough money to pay the claims that come for the participants of the plan. So, we meet together a couple times during the year. There's a school board member on it. Mr. Schlusner serves on that committee now. There's a teacher, Emily Lynch, from Willow Creek, serves on it. I'm on it. And then there's two members from the community that really aren't employed here that have a say in how it is run as well. We talked with our consultant. We hire Hayes Group out of the Twin Cities. They are not an insurance company, so they don't get a commission for any of the advice they give us. We just pay them a flat fee for their advice. They go out and broker different third-party administrators for us. They worked on the stop-loss renewal this year, and that came in at right around 9%. So, we're going to end up paying about $90,000 more for our stop-loss insurance and the administrative fees with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We looked at all the data. We thought that that was appropriate. There's been a couple large claims this year. There's been two that have been over $500,000. So, anytime one person goes into the hospital or something, it's over $500,000, this insurance kind of makes sure that the fund doesn't get exhausted because of one or two really large claims. So, that's really what we're ensuring there. And then, as well as preferred one, we are renewing with them at no increase in cost, so that'll be a flat renewal. So, again, this was just information to tell you the discussion that was had a couple weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.03, approval of student activities under board control. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this agenda item.
All right. Good evening again. This item is a resolution that the Minnesota School Board Association put out a little over a week ago and asked that districts pass this, if at all possible, by June 30th, just two states, that you will come under compliance with GASB 84th, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board ruling, the 84th ruling, I guess, that says how we need to account for certain things, in this case, of student activity funds. And basically, we need to make sure that that comes under your control. So, we talked about this a little bit during the budget. We're going to have to start putting this in all of our financial documents. It's going to have to go into the budget book in the future, and have to report on it. How it's been operating in the past is that each school has had their own checking account, and we've held the money for them, and the principal has signed the checks. The money has stayed in that checking account, and when the students have wanted to spend it, it's just taken care of at the building. Now, it kind of needs to be centralized, included in all of our records, and reported in all of our numbers, and it just can't be separate anymore. That's the gist of what they're doing, and I think this will be easy in terms of accounting to comply with it. What will be a little bit more difficult is that all the money needs to be funneled through, you know, through the bank centrally and recorded, and purchase orders, credit card transactions, all those things that require approval have to follow the normal procedure that any other general fund type of expenditure would go through, so.
And you did mention a date that this should be approved by, so you'd like to see this moved to action if possible?
That would be great if you could do that.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I just mention one other thing, too? I forgot to say this out loud. It's written in there, but Policy 713 is now going to be in conflict with this, and so that's something that the policy committee needs to get on their list to review and bring that back forward, too.
So, now, if there's a motion on the table to move this to action, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct administration to implement the requirements of Minnesota Session Law 2019, First Special Section, Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5, for fiscal year 2020.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry.
So, the sort, just to clarify, for, the source of the funds are not taxpayer dollars?
Question. Correct. These are all dollars that students fundraise on their own to support their own activities. And if they were adults, it probably wouldn't be held at the school district, but because most of our students are under the age of 18, we're administratively involved in just holding on to the money and helping it, you know, stay safe.
Right. Because the organizations aren't independent, like 501(c)(3) sort of thing.
Correct. Exactly correct.
They're kind of school-sponsored groups.
Exactly. Exactly. And so, now, this, just the law says you need to have that under your control since the staff is doing the work of...
But in general, there won't ever be a question about should it be allowed to be spent. That's still going to stay at the building-level decision.
Correct. We'll have some, we'll have oversight over that, and we'll help guide and say, you know, there are certain rules. It's just not a free-for-all. For example, you can't go and buy alcohol, tobacco, things like that with those dollars. But, yes, it's still going to be the students' discretion and their decision on what things they're going to do, if they're going to give the money away, donate it to, like Bear Creek or things like that, so.
Director Workman?
Just to add, and it's been a while since I've been in the classroom, but I had a fair amount of experience with fundraising, and there is very good oversight at the building level, so, including the fact that when you get checks in your hand, the teacher has to take it down to the office. You do not send it with a student, so, really, really good checks and balances in place.
Additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Does this need to be moved to action? Would you?
It's already been moved in second.
Okay, thank you.
Take the vote.
Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct administration to implement the requir, I just liked how it sounded. The requirements of Minnesota Sessions Law 2019, First Special Section, Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5, for fiscal year 2020.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7.04, approval of reauthorization of board-approved referendum authority. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this agenda item.
Thank you for letting me present this. We got another law change at the last minute, so I need an approval on this one tonight, unfortunately. I'll ask for you to move it to action at the end here. But quickly, what happened is the school board approved, board-approved referendum for five years of taxes payable back, it was like June 7th of 2014, and it was for taxes payable in '15, '16, '17, '18, '19. We would have, I would have been bringing this forward to you later in the fall, probably in the August timeframe, so it would have been renewed for another five years for the levy. But then there was a law change, and I thought we weren't going to have to do it, and then MDE put out guidance about 10 days ago that said, yes, we're going to need districts who did this back in 2014 to pass this resolution so that it doesn't expire. Basically, if we don't renew this resolution, we'll lose $2.2 million of general fund revenue for the 2020-2021 school year. So, the new law says that they're going to take $300 of board-approved operating referendum or voter-approved referendum and just make it into, it's called local optional revenue. And local optional revenue was, started a few years back and just said that school boards, that their option could choose to accept it. It was a way to help out the districts that were having a tough time passing operating referendums in their communities. And so, back at that time, that's why our district chose to do that. And so, now, they're just saying, instead of it being 424, and then the school board could approve $300 of school board-approved referendum, they're just going to put it together, call it one, and it's going to be local optional, $720 or $724. It's going to cancel out the board-approved referendum because basically the legislature said, and I agree with this, too, that a referendum really should be a voter decision. So, just to get rid of that terminology of board-approved referendum versus voter-approved referendum, that's being sunset. It's not going to change our total revenue. It's not going to change our property taxes. And so, this is how it'll look. $424 per pupil is what we have right now, 895 of voter-approved, 166 of board-approved. It totals out to 1486. After, hopefully, you renew this, and then MDE implements the new law on July 1st, then they're going to switch it to $724 of local optional, 762 of voter, zero of board-approved. We'll still have 1,486 of total local revenue. So, in summary, we need to pass this by June 30th, and again, this extension is neutral for property taxes. This is not an increase. This is not a decrease. This just holds it flat. Otherwise, we're looking at $2.2 million in budget reductions.
Director Workman?
I have two questions. First of all, this is just for that particular school year. So, in September, will we be renewing the next five-year one, and would it end up being five years after?
So, technically, what you're going to do tonight is I'm just going to...
No, I understand what we're going to do tonight, but do we have to do the, a five-year thing again in the fall?
No, this is it. This is all done. Five years for tonight, and then they are just going to erase it on July 1st and say it doesn't exist anymore anyway, so.
Okay.
Board approval just is gone.
Now, it's perpetual. The 724 is there every year, forever and ever.
That helps boards that might just kind of forget to do it, too.
Yes.
You said, you had two questions?
He answered them.
Any other?
Move to action?
Second.
All in favor of movement to action?
Aye.
Bid resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535 is follows. One, the board has previously authorized a board-approved referendum authority in the amount of $166.65 per adjusted pupil unit pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 1, 2060-17, subdivision 9A. That authority expires after taxes payable in 2019. The board hereby authorizes that authority for five years, beginning with taxes payable in 2020. The board may subsequently reauthorize the board-approved referendum authority in increments of up to five years. The clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practicable after its adoption, but in no event not later than September 30th, 2019.
Move approval.
Discussion? Director Atkinson?
So, I got confused. You asked a question about having to vote on it in five years, and the resolution says we may do it in five years. So, I mean, we don't have to do it.
Yeah, you know, they gave us the same language to pass as it would have been, assuming it was kind of just going on and on, and you renew it every five years. They just wanted it renewed. We could say one year, two years, whatever. It's kind of a moot point because they're erasing it then, after we turn this in.
That's confusing.
Yep.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I was confused with the red in costume. Director Nathan?
So, it's, so this amount stays on the books as part of our levy for the district, but then the state law changes, which changes the status of that amount July 1st.
It changes the classification. The amount will stay the same. They're re-categorizing it, so, yep.
Director Workman?
So, the June 30th date does not have to be read in this resolution?
They wanted it passed by June 30th, was what they told us, but I do see that they also said in there, just make sure you turn it in by September 30th, so, we'll get it sent in hopefully next week if you approve it tonight.
Trying to cover all the bases here.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say and probably say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.05, approval of new polling place for the November 5th, 2019 special election. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, as we prepare for a fall referendum, there's a couple things that we need to take care of, and this is the first one, so, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this agenda item.
All right, thank you. This one's pretty straightforward. It was, we're working behind the scenes to set up the election for November 5th. We were contacting all the normal polling places, and normal, I mean, the places that last held the election in fall of 2018, the place where our residents are familiar with voting. We called High Point Church, and they said they did not want to be an election site, and we couldn't change their mind. So, what the county suggested that we do is that we combine the residents that would have voted at High Point Church, it's right on Highway 14 as you're heading out to Byron, have those people go to Bishop Elementary School. It's already an established site that we're operating, and it's reasonably close to the residents that would have voted at High Point. So, this would just authorize that change, and then we'll have to unfortunately spend some money and mail notices to every resident to inform them that their location is changing.
Director Marvin?
Just for information, do you have any idea about how many voters would, would be voting at High Point? I mean, how many people will this affect?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I mean, it seems to me that there's, it's something we absolutely have to do.
Correct. Correct. We need, we need a place for them. So, we have discretion to say where that is, and it was just suggested that find as close as possible as you can to the original.
Makes sense.
Moving to action?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution designating a new polling place, Bishop Elementary School, for the November 5th, 2019 special election due to the unavailability of the regular polling place, High Point Church.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7.07, closed session.
7.06.
Approval of amending, 7.06, approval of amending resolution for the November 5th, 2019 special election. This is a briefing item.
Our lawyer, as she was working on the previous resolution that you just passed, pointed out that then she felt most comfortable if we repassed the resolution that you've already passed on, I think around March 19th, authorizing the special election, and then she decided to make a couple other minor adjustments in there. So, one, obviously, the people in Ward 2 Precinct 5, it now says that their site is Bishop Elementary. The second change in there is just a reminder, she wanted to point out, that the combined polling places that we passed back in November, those residents of the town, smaller townships have been consolidated, so that's, again, more just administrative to remind them. And then, third, just to point out that the absentee voting is going to be held at Edison Administration Building. Administration Building. So, we're making plans to have this building open and available for the required number of days preceding the election for absentee balloting.
Director Werken.
Do you know what that date is?
I think it starts in late September or very early October, so, I want to say September 20th through November 5th, but don't hold me to that until I can look that up. It might actually be in the resolution, but it might not be either.
Director Marvin.
To me, this seems a little bit overkill to have to do this, but because I think that this is an attempt to make things absolutely transparent and clear, and make sure people are informed, I'd like to move this to action.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the amending resolution determining the necessity of issuing general-- Whoops. Aye, so, issuing general--
It's the wrong resolution, Jim.
I'm, let's see. You're correct. It is the wrong resolution. Do we need to take a small recess to rewrite that, to make sure that we get the right language?
Chair will entertain recess or finality.
Sorry.
Convene at 6:23. The resolution is, bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the amending resolution determining the necessity of issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Just clarify for the record there that that was the correct resolution, because the whole intent of an election is to approve issuing debt, which will be general obligation bonds after the fact. And then, you use that money to build schools and such.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.07 Closed Session Negotiations. Action item.
Present to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13d03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Adjourned for closed session at 6:24 p.m. 6:52 p.m. Thank you. We're at 7.08. Addendum to Superintendent Employment Contract. This is an action item. And by way of explanation, the board, we acknowledged that we were somewhat remiss in providing clarity of information, and so, we sought guidance from legal counsel, who helped assist us through this process of providing more clarity to the existing contract and addendum, which will be read momentarily, covers those areas that were somewhat problematic in terms of not communicating clearly to the superintendent timelines and items such as that. Now, therefore, in consideration of the foregoing, the mutual promises contained in this addendum and other valuable consideration, the sufficiency of which is acknowledged, the board and the superintendent agree as follows. Number one, amendment to Article 2, Section 5. Article 2, Section 5 of the contract is hereby amended as follows. Section 5, Performance Goals. By July 31st of each year--
Remaining.
--remaining school year covered by this contract, the superintendent will provide written input to the school board regarding at least three annual performance goals for the superintendent. By August 31st of each remaining school year covered by this contract, the school board will consider the superintendent's input and approve at least three annual performance goals for the superintendent. In January, the board and superintendent will discuss the goals and reflect on the updated progress on each goal. Two, amendment of Article 2, Section 6. Article 2, Section 6 of the contract is hereby amended as follows. Section 6 Evaluation. The school board will complete an annual evaluation of the superintendent's performance by June 30th of each remaining school year covered by this contract. As part of its annual evaluation, the school board will consider the superintendent's progress on the goals that were established for the superintendent. Three, entire addendum. To the extent that a direct conflict exists between this addendum and the contract, this addendum will supersede the conflicting provisions in the contract. No party has relied upon any statements, representations, or promises that are not set forth in the contract or in this addendum. This addendum constitutes the entire agreement between the parties relating to the modification of the contract. No further waiver of modification of the contract or any part of this addendum will be valid unless it is in writing and signed by both parties.
Move approval. Second.
Been moved in second. A discussion. Director Marvin.
Just a comment for people who might be listening. We had a great study session, I think. Was it a week ago? No. Time goes so fast. And these are common-sense changes that the board and the superintendent agreed to make. The most important one is that he will be evaluated at the end of the school year rather than in December, so that we can establish goals. At the beginning of every school year, the board and the superintendent together, then, can work on those goals, but midway through, we'll have a conversation. How's it going? What do we need to tweak? What do we need to get after? And then, the evaluation will take place at the end of the school year. So, I just think it's important to point out, there's no conflict, and there should be no controversy. I go British sometimes. But to all of us, it just made more sense.
Director Nathan.
And also to clarify, that at the study session, we set dates to get on this process. So, we have a group working on the specifics of the evaluation tool, have another study session planned for July 23rd, and then we can continue the process according to the timelines in this contract and carry on the superintendent's evaluation in due time.
Director Adamson.
I just wanted to clarify, has the wording change been approved by legal?
This, yes.
Just making sure.
This is a reflection of--
Because anytime we edit checked wording, it would need to be reviewed. Just making sure.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned 6:57 p.m.